Begin with roll call.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
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 Here. Please stand and join us for opening prayer and pledge allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly father, before we begin our meeting, let us take a moment to thank the lord for this opportunity to to be here, working to- working together towards a common goal of enriching our community and all of us who live here. Let us pray, lord, we praise you and ask you to guide us in this meeting that we may be united in the spirit of mutual respect and in health exchange of our ideas. Help us to work together for the good of all of our community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, mister mayor.
Then I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I so move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same signs. Motion carries. I see no awards or proclamations. Did anyone sign in that wants to speak about something not on the agenda? Move it on, that brings us all the way down to the consent agenda. And we've got three items there. Need a motion to approve that.
I so move, we approve the consent agenda as printed. I'll second that.
So a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move on to new business.
I nominate select mayor for two thousand and nineteen.
I nominate Jay Warren for mayor.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So then we move to number two.
I acknowledge an honor leadership in service of past mayor Danny Yurkovich.
I got a few words to say about Dan because.
You're being recorded, so be careful.
Alright. I just want to, I just want to say that I was really honored and humbled to serve in my third term as mayor of Arkansas city. This time around, I have extremely large shoes to fill after incredible leadership shown over the last sixteen months by mayor Dan Yurkovich. Not only has Dan had to serve extended term as mayor due to the changes in election calendar, which has been stressful, stressful on all of us, but he had the great fortune of being the mayor when this commission made the most challenging decision I can remember in my nearly ten years of public service. Our decision to take over the direct control of South Central Medical Center was not one that we made lightly. And is, and it is one that we continue to work through as both city commissioners and hospital trustees. While these things seem to be brighter path now, it did not seem that way this time last year. We could not have navigated those choppy waters as successfully as we did without the capable leadership and steady calm of our captain Dan Yurkovich. For the past seven months, he has been fully double duty as both of our mayor and chairman of the hospital board of trustees. These are times consuming and stressful roles, and it wasn't easy for me or anyone else to take them on, but Dan has earned himself, earned himself as a hard won reprieve. These dual roles that he had to fill took a strong toll on his business, his time with his family, and most especially his health. But Dan, I want you to know the efforts were not in vain, and all of us here sincerely appreciate your perseverance as our leader. Nowhere was your leadership more evident than the push to raise the public awareness and educate voters about the healthcare sales tax incentive. From the beginning, Dan set the tone for the message of all parties would convey to the public. He was instrumental in the development of our presentation and led the way at most of the community town hall meetings. The entire time, he filled every question for citizens with dignity and sincerity. Dan, in honor of your extended term as mayor during which you went far beyond the call of duty, I would like to honor you now with a ceremonial gravel, or gavel and plaque to celebrate your distinguished period of leadership.
Two kind of words, but I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Presented to Dan Yurkovich in recognition of dedicated service as mayor of Arkansas city, September two thousand seventeen to January two thousand nineteen. You did a great job, Eddie.
Thanks, Dan.
Play musical chairs now.
Uh-huh.
Play musical chairs now.
I'm confident we will do well.
Yeah.
Gladly sit over here.
I want everybody to stick around after our meeting, six thirty, for a special reception hallway to honor Dan. So everybody's invited. Alright, I guess new business, number three.
Select vice mayor for two thousand and nineteen.
I nominate Commissioner Karen Welch as vice mayor.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved to second. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, number four.
Appoint three members of the governing body to serve as Arkansas city's representatives on the Strother Field Commission.
Well, I recommend, since I'm the mayor, I'll be chairman next, or a year from now at the Strother Field. That's the way it usually runs. And then the vice, mayor is usually the chairman a year after that, so. Well, I dominate myself and Karen and the third member is whoever wants to.
I'll, I'll continue to be on Strother Field Commission.
Okay. Any problems?
Sounds like a good nominated panel.
Are you gonna make the nomination?
I move, we accept that nomination.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number five.
Designate one member of the governing body to serve as representative to count first.
Who's been on that board?
Dan's been on it.
Okay.
I was, and then when I, when we moved it, took over the hospital, then Karen you took over, I'd do that again, that's fine with me.
Okay. Do you carry it?
That's good.
Why not?
I'll second that. Nobody did.
I guess.
Okay, it's been moved to second for Dan, for the, Kelly first, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Generally, we have an alternate as well, in case the representative can't attend.
Karen, you wanna be the alternate?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So Dan will be the main person, Karen will be the alternate. Number six.
Appoint one member of the governing body to serve on the Arkansas city public library board of trustees.
Is that your position now?
Yeah, this, yes it is.
Do you wish to continue in that?
Fine with me.
I nominate.
I'm, I'm used to it, so.
I nominate Commissioner Dwayne Eastman to continue as a member of the governing board of the Arkansas city public library.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, number seven.
Appoint one member of the governing body to serve on the visit Arkansas city board of directors. C V B.
Same thing, I did this until I was serving as mayor in the hospitals.
I took over, yeah.
Don't you take over that one?
And I'll do it again unless you wanna continue.
It, it does matter to me, it's one meeting a month and it's easy, so. If you want it, Dan, but I'm, I'm willing to continue.
Rock, paper, scissors? You can continue. Sounds fine to me.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I move, we appoint Commissioner Eastman to serve on the visit Arkansas city board of directors.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number eight.
Designate one member of the governing body to serve as representative on the traffic safety committee.
That's Karen. And I, I move that we designate Commissioner Karen Welch as a representative on traffic safety committee.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, number nine.
Designate one member of the governing body to serve as representative on the Cherokee Strip Land Rush Museum Board of Directors.
Nominate Commissioner Ganger?
Oh, I'm already on it, but Jay was the representative.
Jay, but.
Yeah.
So I'm, do you wanna continue?
You wanna be Jay again?
That'd be fine.
Okay, I remove that nomination.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number ten.
Designate the official city newspaper for publication of legal notices.
I move, we designate the Courier Traveler as the official newspaper for publication of the legal notices.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Number eleven.
Designate R C B Bank as primary depository for banking services and all other eligible banks in the community as potential depositories for city funds.
I got a question. Has that always been that way?
Well, it was Corner Bank until R C B took over for Corner Bank. We've had discussions in the past of looking at switching, the problem is it's a nightmare to switch banks. You'd have to keep two sets of banking books, basically, for several months.
Have we ever had Union State do our thing before?
Do we now?
Union State make or?
I'm not aware. Not since I've been here, yeah.
I don't recall it either because it was home national.
Okay.
Is there a cost?
Is there a cost?
Do we have a cost for banking services?
We probably could, together in R F P and depending on what all you had in the bid. And then it'd be the converting over and the direct deposits with the state, with other people and.
How much does that cost us right now? To do all the banking and the.
There's, there's no.
No charge?
Okay, I don't even have one.
So.
I don't need. What does it mean, all other eligible banks in the community as potential depositories, doesn't that include?
We have some CDs that we put out to bid and those are held at other banks at times, so. We do a bid process on that.
Haven't had any problem with R C B having?
No.
Yeah. Maybe something though, we should have a policy of every so many years, we look at it.
Yeah, can we, can we table that? Is that possible? The, the agenda item just asks for you to deposit, or to designate all banks in our city as potential depositories. So I think you could adopt it as is, but then you could work on going out for bid, because as long as it's authorized, then it wouldn't have to be reauthorized.
This would be, R C B would still be authorized and all the other.
Yes, and so it would include R C B, Union States Stock Exchange, and Community National Bank would all be authorized to serve as depositories for the city under this agenda item.
I move, we designate R C B as primary depository for bank services and all other eligible banks in the community as potential depository for city funds.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, any other discussion on it? One of the reasons why, I just kinda brought it up, you know, it's always been R C B Bank and, you know, we've got other banks in the area, I just don't wanna know why, you know, we just.
Do, do you want us to look at it?
Well, I just, I'm, I'm just talking out loud, just seeing what, you know.
I wanna know what we, what our cost is.
Yeah.
Just to see if it's even worth it, I mean if it's.
We don't have a banking fee.
Okay, that's what I didn't know, some banks do charge on commercial, commercial accounts get charged for every, every transaction that goes through.
And they're paying us all our interest at this time, so, but if you direct us to do an R F P, we'll proceed.
Okay. It's been moved to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Something we might wanna check into, Dan, we're just, you know.
Yeah, what, and what would it cost us to change? Could it be worth it?
It'd be manpower, it'd be staff time.
I said, yeah. Yeah, but you put every staff, every staff time is.
Yeah, it's a cost, correct. And they would have, like I said, they would have to maintain two sets of books until everything clears from the other one. The other thing is to, all the vendors, we'd have to alert all the vendors of the new banking, which it, it's doable.
Let's take it into consideration.
Well, let's just look at for next year, just, you know.
We'll look at this year.
Okay. Uh, number twelve.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city to purchase a new warning siren from Precision Communications of Tupelo, Mississippi, and accept a proposal from Precision Communications for parts to repair the warning siren located at thirty-two hundred North Eighth Street, and amount, total amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand six hundred fifty dollars.
Okay, the siren that we're looking at replacing is one that's actually inoperable right now. And that is, that is the one that's at the Arkansas City Public School District Central Office, which is up on Greenway by the Nathan Methodist Church.
It is operable.
Oh, it is operable?
We've had six times in the last two years where it's operable.
Okay. Where's that? It is siren number thr- two, on there, yeah, number two.
So explain the green circles.
The green circles are the ones where we have a battery backup siren. And the ones that are on the orange or the yellow looking, those do not have a battery backup.
We have.
And, and majority of those, the ones in yellow, those are nineteen-seventy's vintage sirens.
Can you pull that up on the screen?
Oh.
We have quite a few in very close proximity, does.
No, it's gonna fall.
Oh, you're gonna have to turn it off, they said. Because it catches.
Oh. Are you qualified to do that?
No, I'm not at all qualified to do that.
Yeah, there is quite a bit of overlap right now, but we take in consideration that we got sirens out there that's hours out, it's not gonna work. And eventually those will probably be done away with.
If the power's out, they're not gonna work?
Yeah, the old style sirens.
So that's the orange ones?
Right.
How many? How many sirens do we have?
In town, we have twenty-four.
Is that a normal number?
Oh, it's probably a little high. But we're, we're gonna do a study and look at this. The folks at Tupelo, he's gonna, I'll send him the information that he's gonna do just a rough, and then we're gonna go look at some companies to come in and actually do a study on the, the sound waves and stuff, what we're getting for coverage.
Yeah, and that's something we talked about, and it's, then we can come up with a much better plan for the long term as we're looking at replacement and retirement of some of these sirens. And maybe movement, taller poles, I mean, there's just a lot of different variables, but some of the variables too is, you know, when we're looking at some of these poles we need to make sure that they're serviceable because we don't wanna get too tall.
Well, basically, if I put in a new siren, you're getting a new pole.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I do not use.
But I'm just saying, you know, maybe a difference, we have forty and a sixty foot pole, I mean, because we can't maintain some of those poles that are, that get too high, we'd have to contract with Westar or another company to help us with the maintenance of those. But it's something we're gonna look into because I do feel that we probably are overprotected and we could probably reduce the number of sirens that we have in our community.
Yeah, this one at Seventh and Birch has been a problem child too the last couple of years. And it's one of the old ones. That will probably be my next one that I replace there.
And so these are.
Then there's one down at Brock Park that's an old one. And we did a study on it a few years ago, and it actually needs to be moved about three to four blocks south where it's at to cover that area. And that would be, that's what would be replaced with a battery backup siren.
So these are twenty-six thousand dollars a piece?
No, no.
How much are the sirens?
Around fourteen thousand.
Fourteen, fifteen thousand.
About fifteen thousand a piece, and we have.
And then plus we have about three thousand dollars in costs when we install them, you know, for electrical.
So about eighteen thousand.
Pole runs around eight hundred bucks.
And we have twenty-four of them?
Yes.
That's a lot of money.
Well, I said, a lot of them have been there since nineteen seventy-five.
I was gonna say, it didn't happen at once.
No.
Yeah.
And plus, the only siren we bought since twenty-eleven was the one at Third Tier, that's the only siren we replaced was twenty-eleven.
So.
And in twenty-eleven, I got four sirens on track.
Okay, so there are people who are hearing two different or three different sirens? Towards this, or more, towards the center of the town, okay?
Yeah, see, we put four to replace the one on top of the A C office building in two thousand and nine, a couple blocks, to cover the downtown area because of all the buildings and stuff.
Right.
And we did not wanna go back on top of a building because that is a nightmare trying to do service or anything on it.
Yeah, getting, okay.
Having access and everything else.
And all the other areas, the new developments that we've done, they all are covered?
Yes.
Well, fixing the one on Eighth Street will help with the new development there on, on the north part of town because that one's.
Yeah, that one's only down to about twenty percent right now.
What do you mean twenty percent?
In other words, out of six speakers, there's only two.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah. Yeah, it took a lightning hit, we think, probably about three or four years ago, and it's just slowly. Now, the parts that we replaced on it, I was able to get some salvage parts from the Joplin tornado company over in Pittsburgh. I was able to get some parts from them, but they, they've gone through all those parts, but they went in and put a whole new system in, in Joplin, Missouri. And.
I was gonna, that's kind of a silly question, but how, when they come in and do that study, how they do that, I mean, have you ever seen, uh, did they, did they, so now?
No, I, I talked to a guy in Tupelo, and he says it's real expensive to do it, to have them people come in and do that. But they, they probably go out and set up sensors and stuff.
Okay.
What they, what they typically do from the ones I've read about, is they'll come in and they'll, they'll look at the LiDAR, they'll look at the different elevations of your community, and then they'll put
Population.
Population base and where your centers are, your, your outdoor center, so where's your ball fields? You know, where are the people gonna be outside the most? And then what they'll do is they'll do an overlay, and then they'll basically commute, computer model it, and then they'll come in after the fact, and then they'll test it. They'll test their commuter, computer model to make sure that it's, that it's satisfactory because there's so many different variables, air pressure, temperature, wind speed, I mean, there's so many different factors that they have to take in consideration when they do these studies to make sure that they're covered. They didn't do as in-depth one in Winfield in two thousand ten, eleven timeframe, but I think, I think that's the one they did, last time they did it, wasn't it? About two thousand eleven?
How many do, do you know, how many they have, Winfield has? They have, they have ten.
They have a few there a little bit bigger than ours. Yeah, they have ten.
So on the picture there, number fourteen, number twenty-two, they're in the city limits, but then you get like number eighteen is out there in Parker Field. Do we, do we maintain that on?
They, they pay for the maintenance on them, we just, we sound them, and then I go out and troubleshoot them for them.
Okay, so.
There and that one I excel. But we actually sound them, you know.
And I excel, really should have two, two sirens out there, and that's something we've talked to.
Yeah, Brian started, I had with them last summer, and, and plus, both of those, we've told them, within five years, we'd like to have them update theirs to the Wayland sirens. The other thing that's nice about the Wayland sirens is we can actually get on there and talk, make announcements and stuff.
I didn't know that.
I didn't ever hear him say anything.
Yeah.
And that, you talk from the command headquarters, okay.
Yeah, they're talk slow and very clearly though.
Well, matter, matter of fact, now they have, where you can pre-record messages.
We may test them all these days just for fun.
Yeah, get off the front porch and take shelter.
Yeah. All the people here this.
Bobby, have we ever had a study done on these sirens before?
We did one in two thousand nine, but I just, one of the companies come in here and we spent a day, just basically went around and was just checking what kinda levels and stuff, plus I get citizen input. Yeah, we put a siren down at Jackson and Seastreet, that was an area that had complaints for years and years and years on, and we got the.
One of the problems we have is just perception, that you're supposed to be able to hear these inside your house, they're never meant to be indoor warning sirens, I mean, that's what your weather radios are for.
And that's why, that's why we refer to them as outdoor warning sirens.
Yes.
Yeah.
One of the things we talked about is, you know, if we can reduce them substantially, if the study finds we can, or move them, you know, that potentially can free up money later years to maybe do a voucher for individuals that could potentially offset the cost of weather radios for them. Maybe give them a ten dollar voucher or something, just offset that cost, because it'd make it a lot cheaper then for us, especially long term.
Cell phone gives you warnings too.
Cell phone, and that's something too, that we, we have the capability now that we can do that based on geocaching and, and actually setting up like a geo-fence, I guess is what it's called, and alert individuals in certain areas, and so. A lot of different technological capabilities are pretty new, so.
Well, I move, we authorize the city of Arkansas city to purchase a new Wayland W P S twenty-nine oh five warning siren not to exceed twenty-six thousand six hundred fifty dollars.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved to second, is there any more discussion?
Well, does that include the proposal for parts to repair?
Yeah, twenty-six thousand.
That, all of it?
Yeah, that takes care of both.
Okay. We just said purchase, it didn't say anything about repair, so I'm gonna make sure.
I will amend my emotion to accept the proposal for parts also.
Okay.
So I second.
Alright, it's been amended and person seconded, any other discussion on it? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number eight, city manager updates.
Cali legislative committee meetings tomorrow at noon at the Chamber of Commerce. I have a meeting scheduled at one o'clock with Senator Ali and Representative Riley. We're gonna talk a little bit about some topics that they're gonna be working on the hill, so we'll be visiting with them. Traffic Safety Committee meeting is Friday, January eleventh at ten a.m. That'll be here in my office. State Commission will have land bank board of trustees meeting five p.m. Tuesday, January fifteenth, prior to our regular meeting. And the one, last item I wanted to have was, there was some conversation after last commission meeting in, in regards to the, the approval of the agreement with Lane Christiansen for the Mill Canal stormwater pumps. I'm wanting to see what the commission's thoughts were in regards to that, I know you were gone, mayor, and I think Commissioner Yurkovich had some concerns that brought up the very end of the meeting. I just wanted to kinda see where the board was in regards to that whole agreement, whether we're proceeding or whether you wanted me to take a different approach. One of the things we can do potentially is if, if we, if the commission feels they don't wanna move forward with it at this time, we can look at just doing the electrical upgrades to get the pumps, new electric service and get those done immediately, and then worry about the stormwater pumps and potentially go after grants later on, but I don't know what the process is necessarily, Tamara, do we have to repeal that? Technically, because technically we've already approved it.
Yes, um, so good.
Which means that I have to take action on it legally, so.
Unless we just move to repeal the prior resolution and then provide staff direction as to how you would like for us to proceed.
One thing that I found out afterward is we were told that Lane Christiansen said they're the only ones that could rebuild that pump, and found out there were others.
Well, Fairbanks Morse, I believe, was the one that was rebuilt. Well, Fairbanks Morse, I believe, was the one that was rebuilt.
Fairbanks Morse was the only one, but there, there were other contractors that could send it to them.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, there's other contractors that could do the work.
They may seem as if they were the only ones that could do that. At least, that's the way I understand it.
Yeah, and I, um, I think we should repeal the resolution, and, uh, we had talked about, you know, doing the electrical part of it, and then maybe looking at the other on down the road, sending it out for a different type of bid.
Well, potentially what we do is probably just put it on hold for, uh, for a while and, uh, look at grants, um, and try looking at grants for the next six months, a year, and if, if we're unable to obtain any grants, then maybe take another look at it.
Both pumps still work, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, and, uh.
The electrical is a concern though. I agree with that, Bob and Mike, the electrical is really the, the major concern.
How much? We?
Yes, but something else that came up too is, when you do, when you do the electric, you need to know what kinda pump you're gonna be putting in. When you do electric, I talked to Mike Belles about this today, so that can be an issue in itself. But like I said, if you're gonna do electric and leave the existing pumps, then that's not a problem.
Yeah. Can you do it to the existing pumps, the, the electric?
Yeah, and like I said, if we, if we're gonna go, we need to go now.
To do the electric?
Yes, needs to be done, because we're gonna be getting the wet season here, and that's, that's probably gonna have to be down for a week or two.
Do you see a lifter part?
I think we just need to go ahead and put it on hold and wait to see. I'd rather have a company that's built the pumps to redo the pump.
Yeah, me too.
It's Fairbanks Morse, it, Morse has been there since nineteen thirties.
Yeah.
That's eighty years, and I know they're still working, but.
Well, we're, we're estimating these pumps are at least seventy, sixty to seventy years old.
And if we can find some grants, then build later, and if.
But like I said, another thing that makes me nervous is we, this has been needing to be done for the last ten years.
The, a little.
And every time it storms, or we're down there constantly trying to keep it going.
Are you talking about the electric?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the electric's a concern, if you have, because we can actually also put on like a scada-type system where it'll alert us if the pump's down, can send us email alerts, or it could, we could tie it in with the wastewater plant, so we can actually get alerts if the pump's going down, if it's overheating. We can set up different controls on the pump, just to alert us of what's going on with, when we do upgrade the electrical system.
And there's a, a much less, there's a one-year warranty on a rebuild.
There's a two-year warranty on a new one, I believe, is what it was.
And so.
But everybody's telling me that new ones, you're gonna have to replace them in ten years.
Right, and we just, and there are several where they've had rebuilds and they've failed fairly quickly after the, the thing was over and it was gonna cost another excessive amount of money to get them replaced with either new or to have them rebuilt again.
Now, who's had that issue?
Yeah.
Wichita, the city of Wichita.
Were they that kinda pump?
Yes, Fairbanks.
Was it a similar situation?
No, they did a rebuild, isn't that?
Was that from the Cheney Lake, and some of the problems they've been having there, or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not that familiar with that, to say whether those were a later model or whether they're resulted in what these are.
Yeah, don't, yeah.
But they, they've told me that you're not gonna get a pump like these. And like I said, and tip, and I said, the other thing is, they won't know till they get in there and actually turn them down.
Right, whether they can rebuild them or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the electrical is what needs to be done right now.
Right.
I think we, uh, so, how we need to do this, Tamara?
Um, if you do want to repeal the prior resolution, it would be a motion to repeal resolution number twenty-eighteen dash twelve dash thirty-two twenty-seven.
Twenty-eighteen, twelve, dash thirty-two twenty-seven, that was the number the resolution had.
Okay.
Um, so it's just a motion to do that, and then you can just give staff direction as to how you'd like for them to proceed.
Uh, make a motion re- repeal ordinance twenty-eighteen, twelve, dash thirty-two twenty-seven.
I'll second that.
And it is a resolution.
Did I say resolution?
You said ordinance, but I, I assume that was an error.
So how often would we be down there fixing the electric, or messing with this here?
We're down there a time or two.
Really?
Yeah.
So, if we give direction to staff to fix the, we may have to authorize the electrical work if we do this.
What part, how much was the electrical work on the bid?
Forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand? Are you looking, Mike?
I never get seat bids, I don't know.
So if we repeal the elects, if we re- repealed that resolution, we'll have to go back in and authorize forty-eight, forty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, I sure don't want anything to go wrong, we have ADM, they'll get flooded.
Well, that would affect Canpack as well.
And Canpack.
And the college potentially.
And a new water plant.
Yeah, new water plant, college.
The South, Westar Substation, Sleep Edition.
So we don't, we don't wanna, we've got maybe something.
Forty-four, five, five, five was the amount?
Yeah, I see.
Was that the Denver, December eighteenth meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So you feel like you'll be in really good shape with the electrical done?
I'm sorry?
You'll feel like you?
That would make a big difference.
Okay.
And, and the other thing I was gonna discuss was, Westar, when we do this, they wanna come in and re-run their wires. Right now, we had to use the ladder truck from the fire department to, to repair it here a couple of years ago, uh, 'cause we couldn't get to it. But they're wanting to bore underground and then come up beside the ready with, uh, with their electric and then going to the building. Right now, it's on a little access road.
Yeah.
Their trucks can't hardly fit down there to change out or do work.
Gets scary.
Yes, and when, when it's raining, it's wet, it's like.
Yeah, that access road is very scary.
I, I scared him coming down there.
Yeah, 'cause it was, it was wet and it's.
The back end of the Jeep started sliding off, so. But, uh.
So here, here's the thing though, and I, I, we're, we're gonna redo the electric to fit this pump.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So someday if we rebuild it, we're gonna have to rebuild this pump.
Yeah, well.
Or get a new one and throw out the electrical work.
No, not necessarily.
Not necessarily, just might have to make some changes.
You just, might make some adjustments to the pump, you have to make sure that you size the pump and match up.
Or the starter and stuff will, you know, their starter matchup for.
So maybe some minor electrical work that has to coincide with it.
But we've had three or four electricians come in down there, Lane did, I met them down there. As soon as I walk through the building, I tell them, okay, that's gotta be just done within a week or two. It's gotta be done immediately, all of them basically said, I can't do it, so, the local people.
Yeah, locals, we, none of them would touch it.
So, okay.
But Decker, the, the guy that does Decker, him and Tim, uh, Westar.
How, Denny?
Denny, they actually worked together, so they were able to hit it right off, discuss what needs to be done and stuff. And that's, that's the only thing I would hate to lose that, uh, with those two, because they're, they're gonna have to work together on this, yeah.
So, but if we repeal this and just authorize the electrical part, we, Lane, Lane Christiansen would still be the contractor and they would, they would hire the electrician?
Yeah, Lane, Christiansen would still oversee it.
Yes or no?
Yes or no? Uh, I don't know.
They don't know, 'cause it'd be indifferent.
They're working with them, uh.
Well, we can.
Get them as project manager maybe.
We have Lane serve as our project, lead for it, and award the contract to them, just amend the current agreement to, to just do the electrical work and improvements associated with it, and, um, award it to Lane, and have them be our manager, project manager.
So they've already done all the labor, yeah.
Yeah, they've already done the work, so it'd probably be best, it'd be much work.
And they've done work for us before, and we're happy with them.
Yeah, yes.
So, if we repeal this and go back, we've got to call them again and try to make negotiations with them on just the electrical work, right?
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, that'd be my suggestion.
So this, this price of forty-four, five, five, five doesn't hold?
Probably won't stand.
No, no, it would have to be, they'd have to go in and look at it, because there may be some changes that need to be done given that they're not gonna be pulling the roof off, they're not going, because that was one of the things that they said they were gonna do electrical when the roof was pulled off, um.
I don't think you need to pull the roof to do.
Yeah, but there may be some additional labor costs now that you're not pulling the roof off.
Yeah.
And we'll have to have them go in and look at it, take a fresh look at it.
So, will that take, what, six weeks, four weeks?
I don't know.
Don't know, we'd have to just call them.
Yeah, we'll just, yeah, I think they were trying to, they were planning on doing it, it, pulling that pump, do the electrical work, and have it done within two weeks, was the original.
So we.
And Westar be there work and.
We've repealed the thing that's gonna set us back four to six weeks, probably.
Yeah.
So that may not be too wise.
No, but then again.
Well, it, it may not rain either, so, because you don't know.
It's just like taking a chance, may take a chance.
Yeah.
But I've seen that when it's taking a chance, it's not a good chance.
Well, that's the other thing about Lane too, if we had green pumps in, I think they would have the contacts be able to access that type of equipment and stuff, or anything.
Yeah, we talked about that during our meeting.
Yeah.
That's scary.
Well, I'm not.
Can we just have?
There's a lot, a lot of components to this, so, yeah.
I think city manager had a good idea, just go ahead and have them do the electrical, and we'll just hold off on the rest of it.
Yeah.
Try to get a grant.
I'd say do, do the whole thing now, but, you know, whatever works out.
I'd say that's an option, if the commission, then I was just, I brought that option because of concerns from individuals after the last meeting.
Yeah.
Did we look out to see where any of those concerns valid, of, it's really found out, after we'd approved it, people said there were other contractors that could do this, did we find anybody, is there anyone else that can do this work that could, that we could have bid and we didn't?
I'm, I'm sure there is. I'm, I'm sure there's other groups.
And then why did, why didn't, well, how did it fall for the cracks that we didn't have anyone else, well, who knows, but even if, if they'd come in at a higher price, then we would've felt better about this bid.
Same price?
Well.
We just, we just don't know, I mean, right now, we could be paying fifty thousand more than we should, maybe we're paying twenty thousand less than anyone else, we just, that, that's the pro, we, the process fell through, that we don't know.
Yeah.
And that's the question, is why did that happen?
But, uh, like I said, we, we know that they're the best in this area, they've got a good reputation, even Mel said that, that they have one of the most outstanding reputations, stuff.
Well, like.
I feel like they're giving us a fair bid.
Except we don't know.
Yeah, well, like I said, I think the next closest people that would be able to do anything similar to what they could do is like on the west coast and down around in Mississippi and that area.
Well, we can be here all night on this thing, uh, we got a motion to second on the floor, I, uh, I wanna call the vote right now, all the favor?
No, for the all the favor?
I mean, for the.
The call the question?
Yeah, call the question. All the favors say aye?
To call the question? You have to have, you have to have two-thirds vote to be able to stop the discussion and call the question. Not, you can't, you just don't.
See, basically saying.
We, we have it, we have a, we already had a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor.
Call, call for the motion, be right on.
We're calling for the motion.
Call for the motion, then. All the favors say aye, aye?
And that's to repeal?
Yeah, to repeal.
To repeal, aye.
Motion doesn't carry.
Okay.
More discussion, so what, what does that mean?
Means it stands.
It means stands, a lot of Lane Christiansen, no.
So, they spend a quarter of a million dollars plus with one bid?
All right. Any other business?
No, Mr. Mayor, just got, uh, some cake and punch out there.
Okay, play your motion for a chairman.
Move, so, so move.
I'll second that, all the favors say aye?
Aye.